All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of members. Michael Throtto, Chair.
Jared O'Connell, Vice Chair.
Rosei Medina.
Travis Tucker.
Jeremy Rabado said he would be running late tonight, so he may be coming in eventually. First item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items, items that are not on the agenda for this evening. Is there anybody from the public who has any input on non-agenda items or would like to comment this evening? Hearing none. I will close public input on non-agenda items. I'm actually gonna go, I'm gonna switch it up here on the agenda. We're gonna go down to number four first. Site plan amendment, thorough properties LLC, sixteen Colby Road, tax map twenty lot twenty-nine. Intent is to pave in the front of the warehouse for nine parking spaces. It's my understanding that the applicant is not gonna be present this evening and that we need to continue this to a date and time certain. When we wanna do that?
May twenty-first, I told them.
May twenty-first, okay. So, the applicant was scheduled to be here tonight, is not here. They requested a continuance and so I need to, we need to entertain a motion, someone to entertain a motion to continue the site plan amendment for the rural properties LLC, sixteen Colby Road, tax map twenty, lot twenty-nine, to be rescheduled to May twenty-first.
So moved.
Okay, by Jared. Do I have a second? Second by Rosei. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to continue the site plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes four zero zero. Thank you. All right, so we'll go back up to number one on the agenda. Home occupation application, Jeremy Proventure Epic Enterprises LLC, sixty-nine Nattacook Ave, tax map eighteen lot one four three. Proposed business, online firearms and accessories, March two thousand twenty-four, inspected by ATF. Is the applicant present this evening? Why don't you come forward to the table, have a seat, introduce yourself to the board?
My name is Jeremy Proventure. I live at sixty-two Nattacook, not number sixty-nine, so that was one correction. Yeah, here to, here requesting at-home occupation for a firearms business that has been licensed since two thousand sixteen at map eighteen lot one forty-three, otherwise known as sixty-two Nattacook.
Okay. I do see that we do have a home occupation permit that was submitted by Mr. Proventure. This, so the proposed business is online firearms and accessories, so is, this is all gonna be basically online?
Yes.
Sales or?
The predominant amount will be on, the only in-person sales that I'll be doing is to people that I know. So I don't have any posted hours, I don't have any signage, I don't have any entrance, so nobody can come to my house and buy anything. It's only people that I know that I would be doing any onsite sales to.
Okay. So there's no issue then with parking or anything like that?
No, no parking, no signing, lighting or anything like that, correct.
Okay. So we do have our site, our home occupation requirements. Typically with a home occupation, usually it's required that the applicant have a sketch plan providing the name and address of the owner of record, name and the applicant, if not the owner, the tax map lot number, total area dimensions of the parcel. There's a whole bunch of requirements under one fifty-one of the site plan review regulations. Jay, do we have any issues with this? I mean, it obviously.
I received a copy of a plot plan or any sketch.
Okay.
Just wanted to leave these.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Are you, so it's mostly online. You, I guess, have a, is it a permit from the ATF or the?
Correct, yeah.
Firearms that, that's that, okay.
I got a license from the ATF, a license since two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Renewed three times since nineteen twenty-two and twenty-five. And just recently passed my most recent audit, and this is the one thing that came up from the town that didn't come up before.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Obviously, you, you have provided a plan or it looks like a plan of the the property.
Do you have a dedicated spot where you do your business activities?
Yep, I do. It's, I have a, you know, finished office space down in my basement, which I use for my regular job. This is a part-time kind of hobby business. There is safes, there are locks and storage for everything that's there. Everything stored in the basement is behind double locks, so there's a lock in the bulkhead. There's also another locked door behind that, and the basement door is also locked, and there's two other locked doors for a storage area as well.
So this is to register the house as a business, basically?
Yeah, technically. Just to have, be able to do business there.
In case somebody wants to come get.
Yeah, it has to be, according to Litchfield Town, you have to have the home occupancy permit, so that was a town requirement.
Do you anticipate storing anything outside at all on the property?
Nothing at all. Anything that gets stored outside the property would have to be a separate licensed location with the ATF, and I'm not big enough to do that.
Perfect.
It's a small amount of inventory that stays in my house, so it's usually buy something for somebody. When it comes in, they come and do a transfer and they walk out with it.
Perfect. The basement seems like an appropriate place for this type of activity.
Yeah. There were some questions that were passed to me from one of the.
Yes. So I guess, Jay, do you have anything to add? I mean.
I know, now that we've seen the plot plan, the location of the house, it does seem to comply. We've heard an explanation of the nature of the business.
So we did receive notification from, I believe this is in a butter.
Yep. My neighbor who lives to one outside store.
Let me, let me read this into the record, and then if you want to respond, you can. So this is from Derek Gardner to the Planning Board of Litchfield. Hello, I unfortunately cannot make the meeting this evening, so I wanted to pass along my questions, concerns, hoping they will be addressed. I am the neighbor directly next door to sixty-two Nattacook. Regarding sixty-two Nattacook Ave, home occupation application, online firearms and accessories. Number one, will there be in-person sales? Two, traffic concerns in the neighborhood down Nattacook. Will there be any deliveries to this address that fall under the category of weapons? Three, security, if the answer to number two is yes, there will be an, yes, will there be an inspection of the building, of the business owner's security system? Four, will the business address be posted anywhere online? Five, will there be an ATF inspection for storage safety? And six, does a local police department also conduct an inspection of any kind? Thank you, Derek Gardner. And that's sixty-six Nattacook Ave, Litchfield, New Hampshire. So that is.
Is that uploaded here or just, or?
I was just handed this this evening by Ms. McKibbin.
Not on the side.
It's not on the side.
Came in today.
It just came in today, so. But certainly. So I guess, I mean, I don't know if you wanna respond to this. I mean, in terms of going one through six or whatever, but.
Yeah, I've got a copy of them here and I can kinda go down and answer them. Will there be in-person sales? I think we covered that, so only to people that I know. Nobody that I don't know would ever come to my house, so if they do, they'll be turned away. They will not be allowed in, I can promise you that. Number two, traffic concerns in the neighborhood down Nattacook? No, like I said, anytime that's a friend or family, it's, you know, one a car that would ever show up and just like anybody else's friends or neighbors. Very minimal at best. The second part to that question, will there be deliveries to this address that fall under the category of weapons? The answer to that is yes. Just so everybody knows, it would either be come from FedEx or UPS, and they have to be signed by an adult over the age of twenty-one. So if nobody's home, nothing will be left outside unless it's signed for in person. Number three, security, if the answer to number two is yes, will there be inspection of the business owner's security system? It's not a requirement of the ATF or any of the things that I'm required to, but I can kinda talk about it. It is a fully monitored security system. I have five cameras and, you know, door and window sensors on every accessible window or door. So, you know, just like any other, you know, retail business, a pretty secure system that goes off and is monitored twenty-four seven. Number four, will the business address be posted anywhere online? I do have a website, but I do not post. As a matter of fact, the website isn't, hasn't been up in years. I don't even, I probably won't post it, but I, even if I do, I will not put the address on that. But I believe that the ATF does have public posted information on firearms dealers and addresses, so that may be posted there. Number five, will there be an ATF inspection for storage safety? Yes, just went through that with the ATF audit. You know, every so often you get random audits from the ATF, and that's actually what brought us here today. So they do inspect, make sure that everything is stored accordingly, that they are behind double locked doors, and that if there is anything outside of that, it has to be locked. So, you know, that gets passed that way. And on number six, does our local police department also conduct an inspection of any kind? So where, I'm not aware that it's any requirement, definitely not from the ATF, but not sure if that's a requirement of Litchfield PD.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, and are the other members of the public that wish to comment on this application who are here this evening? Okay, seeing none. I will close public input. Well, I mean, what is the will of the board? What do you wanna do? We have a home occupation before us. It's online sales, it's pretty straightforward, we've dealt with this before.
Been open since two thousand sixteen, you said?
Yeah.
And it's just you, right? There's nobody else?
It's just me, correct. And just, I'll also add that I have also received two licenses to sell pistols and revolvers from the Litchfield PD Department that have done background checks both in nineteen, twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen.
Have you licensed in Massachusetts too or no?
Just New Hampshire, so I can only sell to New Hampshire residents, so I don't sell to Massachusetts. Anything that goes across state lines has to be shipped from here to a FFL dealer in that state.
The, the permit from ATF, did you provide a copy of that to either Joe or?
I can provide this one for you.
Sure. We'll just keep it for the record.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's okay.
This is just a photocopy, so you can have it.
Thank you.
Do you want the copies of the Litchfield?
No, just, I think the ATF permit is fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So. Does anyone wanna entertain a motion? To approve the home occupation?
I'll prove it.
So you'll make a motion?
So approve it, yes.
Okay. So, just so that we, it would be a motion to approve the home occupation application for Jeremy Proventure Epic Enterprises LLC, sixty-two Nattacook Ave, tax map eighteen lot one four three. Proposed business, online firearms and accessories, March two thousand twenty-four, inspected by ATF. I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay. A lot of people want a second. So, we have a motion, have it second, any further discussion? All right, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approval of the home occupation application for Jeremy Proventure sixty-two Nattacook Ave, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Four zero one. So you are all set? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joan, thank you for all your help.
And that as well. And one more thing, sorry. Okay. What did we do? Oh, you gave me the agenda, okay. I gave you the agenda, I'm sorry. All right. The next item we have on the agenda this evening is a site plan amendment, Corning Farm at River Edge LLC, Route three A, tax map twenty-two lot fourteen. Number one, show the existing house to be razed. Two, place a proposed duplex housing where the mailbox cluster was originally proposed and move the mailbox area. Three, move a dumpster location on Belgian Drive. Four, show the proposed sidewalk along Route three A. Five, revise the phasing of this project. Part two, a subdivision of one lot into two, tax map twenty-two lot fourteen. Purpose of the subdivision is to have thirty-two condominium units north of Mustang Drive on lot fourteen one and thirty-four rental units on lot fourteen. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes.
Would the applicant introduce himself to the board?
My name is Reginald Moreau, and I'm the manager of Corning Farms LLC, the owner of the property. With me tonight is Eric Mitchell from Eric Mitchell Associates, the engineer.
Welcome.
And Eric will bring you through the changes in the plan and then
Okay.
I'll help on a couple of other items that we need to go over.
And Joan, I assume all butters have been notified and all?
Yes.
Whenever you're ready, sir. My name is Eric Mitchell. We actually have two applications before you tonight for the project. The first one that was submitted was an amended site plan, and the second was for a two-lot subdivision, and I'll explain both of what we're trying to do. The project itself was, has already been approved for sixty-four three-bedroom units, and it's under construction now. What the, the calls for the amended site plan, which I think is minor in terms of what we're trying to do, is one, that we did have the, this area over here, this is where the mailbox cluster was, and we're moving it down the road here. Secondly, the existing house there, which is an old house, there's been a lot of discussion about that. That is not capable, capable of being rehabbed, and Reg, you can talk more about that if you need to. So the proposal is to not put two units in there that was originally approved and to dismantle that and take those two units and put them over here. Two townhouse units, same style, everything else as the other ones. In addition to that, the dumpster location for the road here was in a little bit different direction, so it's proposed to be there now. And lastly, I think the phasing that we had here, we'll change it a little bit, and there's a couple of different reasons. Is, one, first phase is what we have here, Belgian. Second phase would be on Dutch. And then each of these sets of units, which are on their own driveway down Mustang, will each have their own phase. A lot of that has to do with construction permitting at the state level and that. The project that we're doing here really isn't changing anything. What you, other than taking down the building here and putting the two units down through there. We're not changing any of the pavement, we're not changing the driveways, the drainage, the utilities, none of that is, is changing. So that'll all be the same as what it was. That's the site plan portion, and we can, just to give you a brief overview of what we're doing on the subdivision, and we can go back into the site plan. Subdivision itself, we're proposing to cut the parcel into two lots. One lot over through here, which will be lot fourteen, will have thirty-four three-bedroom units on it, which should be rental units. The remaining thirty-two units, which would be on the lot fourteen dash one, would be condominium units. So these would be able to be sold to individuals. These have to be rented, and there's a reason, a rationale behind that relative to there's certain limitations on what can be rentals, what can be condominiums, and that's why we're doing the subdivision. The line that we're subdividing comes down through here and goes across. So this area through here is lot fourteen, which has the rentals on it, and this part of the lot here is fourteen dash one, which has the condominiums. On this as well, none of the infrastructure changes. There are gonna be requirements for maintenance of the roads, the road, the driveways themselves, all three of these. Mustang, Dutch and Belgian are all gonna be maintained by the company that owns the rental units. However, the homeowners association for the units here are gonna have to do something to factor in their role in future maintenance. The project itself, all of these four units up here are constructed, and these two are under construction. Well, these are still under construction, but they're close to being done. So if you look at it from, look at it from the sky, not much of anything is changing. But it is changing on paper because of the amendment, and the biggest thing is taking down the building here and putting the two units down over there. And the subdivision is for, just so that one lot can have rentals and the other one would have condominiums. That's my introduction on that, if you'd like to answer any questions, I don't know if Reg wants to add anything? Do you want to? I'll just add a little bit, just to, you know, bring some clarity. One of the things that we were looking on the site plan to kinda move things along was the, the building, of course, and that's been in front of you several times, and we've, we've met, excuse me, with the Heritage Commission numerous times. They've been out in the facility, in the building, rather, and have looked at the building. They've had people go out there, salvage people go out there and look, and what they determined to be of value, we have salvaged for them, and we've, you know, removed from the structure, they'll be going over to the Heritage Commission's location for them to store or utilize however they want to. Recently, you know, we had a, a couple of salvage companies go out there and look at it. One of them was done for the Heritage Commission. They came back and basically said that the salvage value of the floors or some of the other areas just didn't exist. You know, it's not like you would think, when you go in there, it's not hand-hued beams, it's the saw cut. So there's been a lot of replacement and stuff. The floors, they claimed that were, at least initially, they claimed were too thin because they'd been sanded so many times that trying to pull them up would kind of destroy them. So that was, that was kind of an issue early on, and it was determined that the salvage company wasn't, didn't see any value there. So we moved forward and put it out to bid to see what we could do to, you know, get the, get it removed and get it on the schedule. Of course, based upon what the board finds here and, you know, what we end up with for an end procedure, because we're still trying to work through what that might be. It was brought to my attention that if we could get somebody from the Heritage Commission to send a letter over to the board, it would be helpful to maybe bypass some of the criteria that is there for purposes of public knowledge, you know, or public notice, because the historical significance that was thought was originally there isn't necessarily there. There was a lot of things that, like the old Underground Railroad, the tunnels, you know, we dug up everything behind that house. We went down eight, nine feet to put water lines in and everything else, and there was nothing, just virgin earth. So just those kind of things, you know, really just didn't plan out. So in the end, you know, we did hire somebody to remove and, and take down the building. The initial, it was kind of, there was a last minute, I don't wanna call it a setback, but a last minute question. Apparently, the original demo company that said the floor floors weren't of any value after we had, after they had told us and after we had gone out and signed a contract with a salvage company, we, we informed them, you know, that there is no salvage value. Nope, it's been determined that. And then they came back and said, just this week, or last week at the very end, that there may be some salvage value in some of the floors. I had kinda sent a note off to the Heritage Commission and said, look, I've already signed a contract. It's, it's, any salvage value has been given to them. I no longer have the ability to just go in and, and change things. So that was kind of a last minute thing. It doesn't appear to be a real, you know, I've had some conversations with some of the members. Doesn't seem to be a real hangup, but I'll let them speak after their meeting that they have, I think it's gonna be this week. And so they'll, they'll probably forward a letter over to you with their findings, yes. But it was just something that came up at the last minute, and I do, I do feel it was worth noting, just, just so that you guys are aware of it. Other than that, the, the area that Eric had mentioned, if you've been by the neighborhood, and I'm sure you have, you can see that we've got fences that go right up to the structure. We did repurpose the well that was there on site. We're utilizing that for the irrigation on site, so, you know, that, that's been repurposed. The, we wanna just basically remove the, for lack of a better term, it's a nuisance now because of, you know, children that are gonna be in, in these homes. The first phase is fully rented. We're just finishing up building ten, building eight is being moved into now. So it won't be, we expect our occupancies to be completed by right around June first, June fifteenth, for that first phase. So, and, and we're gonna be completing that, as you noticed, we've, we've put in the plantings up above, we've done the irrigation. We've actually hydroseeded a good portion of it now, but the weather's finally cooperating. So we expect that all of that's gonna go into a robust growth, and we'd just like to kind of finish that whole front phase. And removing that structure is a big part of that. So having the notes removed from the site plan, it said it's to stay and have it as to be razed, that would be one of the things we're gonna be looking for, you know, for the approval today. And of course, the demo process will continue with whatever the town sees fit to, to do moving forward. Other than that, the change for the dumpster, when we looked at that, it was actually up closer to the structures, and just because of the potential for, you know, smells and those kinds of things and noise, we kinda moved it down. There's a natural buffer that's right behind it, there's actually natural trees that are right behind it. So it worked well by just kinda sliding it up and tucking it up against the natural buffer, so that's why we, we moved that there. And of course, the duplex, that was the best place to, to fit it, trying to keep the open corral area as a grass, you know, kinda like a grass metal, and not putting a structure in there, because it's really hard to make a structure that's trying to face the road and then face the other road in the back look good. So this way, we kind of avoided having to try to put two fronts to a, to a structure. So that's why we moved it into that location over near the easement. And of course, when we did that, we needed to move the, the kiosk for the mail, or the, the actual mail location down to where the other parking was, and it works well there for purposes of access for the, for the neighbors and for all the residents to go over and grab their material. There's also a, a light pole that sits right there, right over it, so it worked extremely well from a, from a security standpoint. We got lights right there. So that's, that's a good spot for it. Other than that, Eric did mention, you know, phasing, our intent, our intention is to complete phase one. We'll be doing the residential rentals, we're hopeful that we're gonna get into there towards the end of the summer. We'll be working on that. But we'll be focusing on the, the, if we get the subdivision and we're able to move forward with the condominiums, we'll be focusing on the first two buildings there, which is the three and five Mustang. Those structures are already up. Eric had mentioned that there are some things that we need to do in order to meet phasing requirements, both at the AG and with any potential lenders. And those are that, you know, if we're gonna be putting in the Nub Road, we really wanna put both structures in so we can finish that area, and we have to bring all those structures up to drywall at a minimum in order for us to be able to include them in the phase. So we'll be bringing everything, when we do these, we'll be bringing the buildings up to drywall and then giving potential homeowners the ability to select what they want for finishes on the inside of their homes so that they can kinda customize them on their own. We did receive a large demand for purchases, even though we had our signs out front that said leasing only. People were still stopping in, wanting to purchase. And I can only imagine if we didn't have those signs up that. And I can only imagine if we didn't have those signs up that said leasing, it would have been twice as bad. So that's what kind of motivated us to, there were a lot of people that want to buy and live in town, and they just can't find anything. So we kind of scratched ahead to try to figure out how we could make that work. And we were very fortunate that we didn't, we weren't too far along, and this layout works extremely well for that purpose. So that's the, the reason for that.
Before I go any further, I think what we need to do is maybe accept the application for completeness.
Yes, and because they are two separate plans, I think we.
I'm going to do them in separate. One motion for each, okay. So obviously, Joan, all butters have been notified. There were any fees for this or no? Or it's just an amendment?
Subdivision or fees.
Subdivision fees, okay. And those have been paid?
Yes.
Okay. And we can assume their, well, regional impact is not an issue. All right, so with that, and we have all of the required documents, I assume, for the, for the plans and everything. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the application for completeness for the applicant. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to accept the application for the subdivision separation.
Okay, I have a motion by Jeremy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rose. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so that's for the second part, right, for the subdivision part.
The subdivision, yes.
That's the sub.
Yep.
Yeah, this is the subdivision.
So.
Well, we're, we're doing two separate motions, is that what I'm understanding?
So the second one first.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do the subdivision first. So, oh, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All right, vote regarding the subdivision for the application for completeness. All those in favor of that motion to accept application for completeness, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. For the, the site plan amendment, as with the existing house being raised, the proposed duplex housing, the mailboxes and the dumpster, that'll be a separate motion. So I would entertain a motion for that for completeness. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the site plan amendment according to Farm at River Edge L C for completeness.
Okay, I do have a second.
I'll second that.
Second, do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to accept for completeness for the site plan amendment according to Farm, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Okay. Question, I'm just curious, I know when you came before us, I think it was with, for the conceptual, you had talked about building a barn or something on the property. Was that ever proposed, and what happened with that idea?
We haven't done anything with that yet. We, it's something that we may consider down the road, but at this point, we're just trying to get that completed for the people that are living there and then.
So it's still an option, I guess?
Yeah, it's still something we, we would like to potentially bring back to the board at a later date.
It sounded like something that would be nice.
Yeah. It has the character of a barn-style community building out front. It was really high-end of the old fencing you used, it was really kind of the old property that was there.
We, we have a couple of ideas, but we're still mulling through those, and I didn't want to hold this up any further than I had to.
Anything else from anybody?
Is this about both, the first?
Well, I guess, I mean, in terms of the, so I guess the site plan amendment. Do we have any questions about what is proposed in terms of the existing house, the proposed duplex housing that's going to be added, the mailbox, the dumpster, that stuff? Anything about that?
Is the mailboxes, there's only one located, one grouping located on the property for all the units?
Correct, yes, correct.
All the units on Dutch and on Belgian, not the others.
We'll be putting them all up in that location, yes, yep.
How are we going to handle that as far as the condos go, as far as ownership goes?
We'll be doing easements, so, yeah, just access easements, yeah.
So there'll be separate mailboxes installed for the condominiums?
That's correct, yeah, right next to those.
Yeah, perfect. And then there's three dumpsters total on the property?
That is correct.
And all of those would be owned by the rental community?
So no, what will happen is the, there'll be one that will be set up for the association.
Okay.
And then we'll have the other, the other two.
And that one, I presume, would be in the back on Mustang?
That's correct.
Okay.
Jay, in terms of the amendment to the, specifically referring to the, of the site plan amendment, do you have any, anything you want to add?
I think really it's a, it is a minor amendment. Their proposal is to take down one building proposed for two units and replace them with two units. So there's no change in overall density in the mailbox, the dumpster, you know, really has no appreciable effect on internal circulation, drainage, there's no impact to traffic. So overall, it really is a very minor.
I know we did get something from our town engineer, Mr. Karen, there was a letter that was submitted. Lou, did you want to make any comments regarding your letter of May seventh?
Yeah, the, the comments that I really have, has to do with an easement with the detention pond, part of the detention pond at the bottom of Mustang. It's being split now by the proposed property line. Whatever language they come up with for the condominium doc, the declaration or bylaws, whatever documents there are, has got to specify that the apartment owner is responsible for all the maintenance of the roads and the detention basins. The condo owners, as, as Reggie mentioned, will have to have access easements for both the, using the roads, accessing the mailboxes. They will be, the condo association will be responsible for their own driveways in whatever drainage facilities, infrastructure there is in the driveways, because there are some catch basins that extend into those driveways. That'll be a condo responsibility. But the maintenance and operation of the detention ponds will be the department owners, so that has to be spelled out.
So regarding the subdivision, do you anticipate any complications regarding the costs of maintenance being partially subsidized by the rental company?
No, what, what the, these are very, it's not uncommon, not unusual to have something like this where you're passing over. I did one up in Clark, and it was the same way. And if there's a project that's utilizing, there's actually some R S As out there that say that if, if there's a project utilizing another project's roadway, that, you know, the, there's a, there's usually a budget that's put aside for that. The maintenance remains with the owner of the land to get it done. But there is a contribution that is paid on a monthly basis for those, for those services. That'll all be part of all the documents that we will be submitting to you for your, for your review. All the easements will be part of that, they'll be well shown on the plans. We'll also have a budget that we'll be putting together that we'll be sharing not only with yourselves, but probably with the, well, not probably, we'll be sharing it with the AG, of course, as well as any potential purchaser. There's a process that we have to go through with any condominium that's over fourteen lots or fourteen units that we have to bring everything up for the attorney general to review. And they highly scrutinize these, these types of projects to make sure that it's, everything's well covered. So, you know, our attorney's working on all these documents now. I was hoping to have something for the next meeting, you know, over to your attorneys before the next meeting. We'll see how that goes. I know that he's working on it now, and hopefully we'll have it done for you so that that way you can review it and ask any questions in that regard.
Thank you.
And obviously, those documents will be submitted to town council for their review as well. All right. Anything else about the, specific to the amendment? Anything about the subdivision piece? Any questions there?
I think you made your second ago here, um, you're doing more than forty, you intend the subdivision for the sales. You're doing one development with four, four phases, was your plan? Very good.
Michael, can I make a comment from the Conservation Commission?
Yes, and I was going to read the letter into the record that was submitted by the Concomit during public input. But if you want to make a.
Do you have a letter? I didn't know you had a letter.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I got a letter, yeah. If that's, if that's okay with you, okay. So in terms of the, the subdivision, Jay, do you have anything that you want to add about that?
No, only to just echo Lou's comment, i- if the board did decide it wanted to approve it, it should be conditional on, you know, town council review and approval of the easement documents as well as the condo ducks.
This may have been covered previously, but just, I don't have the septic plan on me, and perhaps you remember. Is the septic system going to be shared between the rental community and those units on Mustang?
No, it's a, the way Eric designed it is actually very nice and very unique. So each building has its own septic design, its own septic system. So they're kind of a, they're tucked in, so each leg that you see there, the lower portion of the leg, so as, as you look at Charles Bancroft, that's the high point of the site, and everything goes down to the fields from there. So the, on each finger that you see there, and I apologize for reaching a finger, but, for each finger you see there, the lower, the lower building has the septic systems behind them, they're actually one next to the other. So they're independent. It's good from our standpoint, because each and every unit actually has its own septic tank. So we can monitor any, anything that's going out, so if somebody's putting bad stuff in, we can see who's doing it. Also, it, it keeps each building separate on its own septic. So we can keep those, so if there's ever a replacement needed, it's not affecting a, a very large group of, of these units. So it, it works out very well, this design was ideal for, for this project.
So if one unit's toilet is running, for example, how much would that cause a problem with the leach field with the shared?
Shouldn't, basically, you know, the fields are very large, if you go back there. And just in general, with the number, I'm going to do a cross-section of the people that we're renting to right now. We're under capacity, under capacity on all the buildings that we have right now with the number of people that are in each building. Typically, with, with a three-bedroom unit, you'd have, you'd get up to four or five people in that building, in each one. We don't, we don't have any of that right now at this point. Everything's either, sometimes it's one person, or maybe two, but on average, I probably would say it's, it's just over two. So we're way under, under the use that's, that's there. But to answer your question, hopefully, Penechuk and, and their fees would be enough to get somebody to take care of any leaky toilet that they have.
Right, so there's, if it's a condominium, the fees they pay for their condo fees, well, money will go towards a budget to help repair in the future the septic, but it'll also be in the budget for inspections. And that's something you may not get with an individual. But where you have, it's sort of like a, a community group like that, they're forced to make sure they do inspections. And because we have individual tanks, if there's something that doesn't quite look right, you can go look in everybody's tank and see if, if something isn't quite being, being right. And the same goes for the, the rentals, the separate tanks for all those two. But the obligation for maintenance of that is the company that owns the, all the properties on it.
Thank you.
And I know that you're working on the proposed sidewalk for, on three A, what, do you have anything, any information about that?
I don't have anything more, other than I know that the, I believe the Conservation Commission has submitted everything to Fish and Game. And I believe we're kind of, oh, hasn't been done yet? All right, well, everything's been submitted to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for them to finish submitting it to wherever they've got to, to get us.
And the location does show on the site plan, we did add that to the site plan. So this is, here on the front cover sheet, this is the area going down through here. Goes around on pole here and goes over to the parking area. So that's a paved, paved to go all the way over.
And the people from the, the, so, the units want to get to the, the sidewalk there, they have to walk down Belgian Drive?
So what they're doing now, because we don't have a break in the fence, which we will be putting in once we do the sidewalk, they're walking out around the, if you notice, we kept twenty feet from the road with our fence to give us plenty of room for both site distance, maintenance, and everything else. So it's off the road quite a ways, so people are walking around that and going, because they're using Mills Fall, I mean, they, they love the, the park over there. As a matter of fact, a couple of people want to help out with the Conservation Commission, Joan, and I'll give, I'll give them your contact, but they want to volunteer. So, but they're utilizing that a lot right now, they really enjoy taking the dogs and going out and doing anything.
So no, no thought of bringing the sidewalk, like, up on Belgian for additional sidewalk?
No, Belgian's a, a private way, and it, it doesn't require, you know, there's not a lot of traffic there, so it's no sense in adding that expense to, to do that. Something we talked about early on in the original plan.
And have you had an opportunity to talk with the fire department, police department about the project? Any suggestions that they made or anything?
Only originally, yeah, only originally, really, yeah, we're not really changing anything, other than people are going to own versus, so.
On the units being usable here, having our individual septic tanks, just by curiosity, I'm sure we'll see it in all the condos that are drafted up here, but are the tanks themselves be owned by the community or owned by the individual units and be there to possibly have maintenance going forward? Do you have any idea what your plan is?
So what's, what's going to happen is that the association's going to charge for purposes of pumping these. They will be, you know, depending on the build-out, but typically, they get pumped every two years, okay? It could be earlier than that, but typical, very typical for these things, because it's a single, it's only a three-bedroom unit, each tank is separate. So every two years. So from that point forward, the association will have a budget where they will have somebody come in and pump out those tanks on a regular basis that's scheduled to keep, it's going to make the, it's going to elongate the, the field life by pumping those every two years, because you do save from getting the greases and any of those other potential things from building up and getting out into the field. If you go any longer than that, what could happen is you could start to get some of that stuff to go out into the field, and you really don't want to do that, so typically, it's every two years that we look and pump them.
Okay.
And I'm sure that in terms of maintenance for like snow events and things of that nature, they will be able to, they'll be in their fees or whatever.
That's correct, yes, all the, all the exterior maintenance of the buildings, inclusive of the snow removal, lawn care, all of that stuff will be all part of their budget.
And what about the, the rental part, is that, or is that going to be?
So that's all, that's all managed by us, we have our own management company, so all of that gets addressed.
So you'll be, okay, yeah, I got it, yeah, okay. Thanks. All right. Okay, anything else from anybody?
So is the sidewalk a part of the plan, site plan amendment for today, or is that going to be something in the future?
Um, it's part of the amendment, yeah.
Okay, so will that have to be conditioned on rev, reviewed by Fish and Game then, right?
No, no.
I think it's already in the process of being, well, if it, once it's submitted, it will be reviewed by.
Right, that would be conditioned on them.
They have an easement, so I think, yeah. They have to look at it and review it and make their, what are their comments, whatever. So, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
One question, do you need to show a separate easement for access to the part of the detention basin that's going to be on the condo property?
Yes, we can show that.
Yeah, the, the, at the end, yes, we'll be showing that as an easement, yes, yes, yep.
An easement, wait a minute, an easement to.
With the detention one at the end of Mustang.
Just the property line, this, this part right here.
So this, so I thought the condo association owns that one?
The one at the end of Mustang, it will be, it'll be owned by the rental company. But as part of, there'll be a fee that will be charged to the condos for the future maintenance, if, if it's needed down there. Those usually don't require a lot of maintenance, and that thing, that particular thing is, we just watch water go into it and go nowhere, just, just goes. So.
And for the dumpster located at that same little part, do we need an easement for that, for the condo association to, to use that?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that separate from the road easement or just included in that?
So there'll be what they call an access easement, and that'll be on both locations, yeah. The dumpsters themselves will be personal property belonging to the association. And, and the maintenance of the, there'll be a fence around it, that'll be to the, to the condos. But anything else will be ours.
And that will be sized for thirty-two units, that one dumpster?
Yeah, it should, what, what happens is you just go by frequency of pickup? And, you know, because we don't. And, you know, because we don't want things to gather, so we just change the frequency of pickup.
Okay.
Yep.
All the dumpsters are on the apartment property.
That's correct, yeah.
And the association will be responsible for picking up from that dumpster, or?
Yes, the association will be paying the fees for that purpose, yes.
Us chairing.
All right. At this time, I will open it up to public comment. Any members of the public that wish to comment on this amendment to the site application? Okay, I have one person. Why don't you come forward, have a seat at the table, introduce yourself to the board, and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Nick Dagger. One Temple Drive, so we're the butters to the project at One Street and I just, I think I heard that there's no real change to the styles of the buildings that are going up. Because I, in reading this thirty-two unit, um, however it's worded, thirty-two unit, thirty-two rental units on lot fourteen, it almost indicated like there was going to be a thirty-two unit apartment building.
No, no.
And that's not the case. Thank you. That was one. The other one, question that I have has to do with the border along the edge that borders Temple Drive, people and all the houses there, what, what their intentions are to, or if anything, on how they're going to take it from what was a forest to now it's, the forest has been taken out and that's kind of left it looking.
On privacy?
Yeah, it looks, you know, like devastation when you, when you take out all the trees and then you just, is there going to be a a burn or something there, or a fencing, or anything like that? That was my other question.
So I apologize, I did not bring the lantern on that edge to create that screen. The reason for the fencing was because we also wanted to make sure we shielded the lights when people are pulling down from going into the homes. So there was a lot of attention given to that, and I do apologize for not having that written here tonight, but I can get you a copy if you'd like.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Yeah. So there's going to be fencing and vegetation?
There's a small fence, so when you, when you look at the way these roads come in?
Yeah, they come in, pointing to the back of the house.
Yes, yeah, because we were looking at, you know, yeah.
Right there, I'm right here.
So what we wanted to do is, they, they, there's a lot of screening that goes up from here around and here, and there's a fence that's there to also try to mitigate light from going through.
Great, yeah.
So it was, it was, like I said, this was a big concern of the board's at the time.
Those, the condos, or those, the rentals?
Uh, these here are all the condos.
Condos, okay.
Yeah. So they did, they did make us, not make us, but ask us to, uh, make sure that we took care of this and we, and actually share that design with you.
That'd be great. That's all my questions.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions, concerns from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will close public input at this time. Oh, um, yes, I will read that into the letter, uh, uh, record as before, well. Scratch what I said about closing public input just yet. Erase that from everybody's memory. I do have one thing from the Conservation Commission Town of Litchfield. It was a letter submitted May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Um, it's addressed to me, Mr. Michael Proto, Chair. It's regarding the Corning Farm amended site plan review. And it says, Chair, Proto, and Honorable Planning Board Members. At the May second, two thousand twenty-four Conservation Commission meeting, we met and discussed the site plan amendment, and we have no comments pertaining to the new proposed units or subdivision. We do request that the applicant consider working with the Conservation Commission to create a conservation easement on the areas that abut Morse Falls, in parentheses, farm field, edge of the river, power lines, et cetera. It is our belief a conservation easement will benefit both the applicant and the town for the protection of historical farm field and providing walking trails for Litchfield citizens and the Corning Farm residents. Respectfully submitted Matthew Hoffman, Chair of the Litchfield Conservation Commission. So I'll read that into the record.
And our comment is that we plan on working with them on that. I know Joan and I have had some conversations and I've had some, also with some of the other members. So we wanted to get the project moving before we trapped ourselves with anything that, you know, if we needed to make some changes and adjustments. We wanted to have the room to do that without, um, having to go over any sort of easements or anything like that. So we're just about at that point now where we're going to be working with them to try to certify both the, uh, the walkway and the, uh, conservation easement.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other public comment, any, from anybody else? All right, I think that's all we have, so.
Do you get anything from the Heritage Commission?
I, um, well, I did, I did talk last night to someone from the Heritage Commission. They mentioned having a meeting with the applicant and doing some sort of a letter regarding the, um, the house. So that, I think there's going to be a meeting, I believe you said the seventeenth, and, or the seventh, um, this week. So I believe that is going to be taken care of at that time, I understand. So. All right, since there's no other public comment, I will close public comment, um, at this time. And I'll bring it back to the board. Before I even do that, Jay, is there any final comments that you want to make? Anything that you?
I know, I think they've all been addressed, but kind of once again, um, whatever actions you take should be two separate actions, one for the site plan, one for the subdivision.
Understood. Um, Lou, anything from your perspective?
Yeah, the, the engineering and drainage has, there's been nothing changed for it.
Okay.
Personally, I think that I think those buildings are very attractive.
Okay.
Well done.
Thank you. All right, anybody from the board? Any, any comments you want to make?
Yeah, actually, um, I know, we've talked about the mailboxes on Belgian Way, and those will be for the rental community. Well, we need, um, a separate site plan in the future showing where the new mailboxes for the condominium association will be installed. Oh, I thought you said that they were going to install them separately on Mustang.
Right next to it.
Okay.
Owners can also add us down.
Okay, thank you.
Same as the dumpsters, it all comes in and stuff.
Perfect.
Right. And that'll all have to be reviewed, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, it's the will of the board. I mean, what do you folks want to do? Do, um, if you have, have any questions? Did you want to make additional approval for the, um, well, we'll have to do two separate, we got to do it two separately. So for, as to the site plan amendment for Corning Farm itself, tax map twenty-two, lot fourteen, regarding the existing house, the proposed duplex, the mailboxes, the dumpster, the sidewalk, and the revised phasing of the project on Belgian Drive. So those things, um, do we want to condition, make a conditional approval, or does someone want to make a motion to conditionally approve? I think the condition is going to be that, um, all documents for easements and, um, all documents regarding the, um, the, uh, the condominiums, um, that has to be reviewed by town council and obviously the Attorney General's Office.
I'm sorry, for the subdivision, for the site plan.
I'm sorry, I'm getting them confused.
Right, so for the subdivision, it, it would be, you know, the standard conditions plus review and approval of the easement docs and condo docs.
Okay.
And then for the site plan, unless there's another concern that the board would have, it would be the standard conditions.
Okay. So essentially, um, the documents would have to do with the subdivision specifically. But anything else, um, does anybody have anything? I suppose we could make as a condition of approval, obviously if the applicant is meeting with the Heritage Commission, that, you know, we just make it a condition, you know, of approval. A letter from the Heritage Bureau, uh, Commission, you know, basically that, you know, that, you know, there's an, you know, understanding.
Concerns have been addressed.
Addressed and, you know, salvage and all that stuff that has been talked about. Um, so we can do that, certainly. So, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm taking some notes.
Working on it. Okay. All right.
Okay, so, um, I think we'll start with, yeah, we'll start with the site plan amendment.
The amendment.
Um, so I will make a motion to conditionally approve the site plan amendment for, uh, Corning Farm at River's Edge to, um, to, to approve it on the condition, uh, the standard conditions and that we receive a letter from the Heritage Commission stating that their concerns have been addressed.
Okay.
I have a second, Jared's.
I have a motion by Jared. I have a second by Jeremy. Any further discussion? All right, as to the site plan amend, to the amendment.
I'll do that separately.
What's that?
A second is to?
So, yeah, site plan amendment, yep.
Yeah, then we're do, so we're doing the, it's a site plan amendment first, and then we're going to do the subdivision.
Yep.
If we, when we, once we get that. So as to the amended site plan.
Dumpster, mailboxes, raised house.
All of that stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second for conditional approval. Um, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the site plan amendment for Corning Farm at River's Edge LLC Route three A, tax map twenty-two, lot fourteen, numbers one, show the existing house to be raised, two, place a proposed duplex housing where the mailbox cluster was originally proposed, and move the mailbox area, three, move a dumpster location, um, on Belgian Drive, four, show the proposed sidewalk along three A, and five, revise the phasing of the project. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. So that's the site plan amendment. Now we're moving on to part two, which is the subdivision.
So the, um, conditions in this case would be easement and condominium documents subject to town council review and, um, specifically adding an easement at the end of Mustang to allow access, uh, to the rental company for maintenance of the drainage pond? Is that correct?
Right, and review by the Attorney General, obviously. And I would also include in there Lou's comments, um, as a condition, um, from his letter of May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, with that, um, do we have a motion? Did you make the motion, or is that?
That was just a pre, to talk about.
That was, that was pre-motion?
Pre-motion.
Yeah.
So we need a motion.
So, so, so which attorney, our, our attorney, right?
Town attorney has to review the, um, uh, the easement documents. Um, they'll be reviewing all the documents, condo documents as well. Yes.
So the town council and, is that included?
In terms of the, the condominium, because it's part, the AG has responsibility for looking at those, I'm just putting that in as a condition.
So A, AG and town council review of easement and condominium documents?
Well, just the condominium, the AG is the condominium documents, the town council would be the, uh, easement and the condominium documents, yes.
So town council will review both condos?
Both those. The AG just reviews the condominium, yeah.
And we, and satisfactory, um, and, well, how would we, uh, address the concerns that Lou had?
Well, I'm just saying, his le, he submitted a letter of May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, so those comments that Lou provided, um, you know, it would be conditioned on those comments.
So fast factory, um?
Which essentially related to the need for easements.
Right, an easement, yeah, need for an easement regarding the drainage.
And did that, that included the easement for the drainage pond?
Yeah.
So I, I don't have to explicitly say that then, because it's in your letter.
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the s, proposed subdivision for thirty-two condominium, condominium units north of Mustang Drive at Corning Farm at River's Edge. The, the condition that condo docs are, um, reviewed by the Attorney General. Town council will review both condo and easement documents and satisfactory addressing of the concerns from, uh, Lou's letter from May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the standard town, um, conditions of approval. I'll make a second to approve.
Second, um, any further discussion? All right, um, take a vote. All those in favor, as to the subdivision, tax map twenty-two, lot fourteen, um, the purpose of the subdivision, you have thirty-two condominium units north of Mustang Drive on lot fourteen dash one, and thirty-four rental units on lot fourteen. All those in favor of the, um, approval as conditions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. You are all set, sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Moving on in the agenda this evening, uh, on number three, site plan amendment. Mel's Funway Park LLC, four, four, three and four, five, four, Route three A, tax map twenty, lots fourteen and seventeen. Proposal to change the holiday light show from a drive-through light show to walk-through utilizing the existing hayride road for the proposed three locations of ten by twenty food, beverage, merchandise kiosks with heating elements and one fire pit is the applicant present this evening. I believe they are, so the applicants introduce themselves.
I have to excuse myself.
Yes, uh, so we will, yeah, we'll, yeah, so, um, Rose is going to recuse himself for this one, um, as he isn't a butter, so we have to do that. Thank you. Okay. So, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wayne Caulfield. I'm one of the co-owners of, um, Mel's Funway Park in Litchfield, New Hampshire. Unfortunately, my business partner is away with his, um, uh, with his, uh, picking up his son from college in Florida. So unfortunately, he can't be here tonight. So I'm usually not that good, the public speaker dude, but here I am. So I'll do the best I can.
And, uh, good evening. My name is Matt Peterson with Keesh Norsham Associates here, representing Mel's Funway for the proposed amendment here tonight. Um, just kind of start off first, it's nice not to have anybody in the audience. I know you just went sad, but there wasn't anybody. As you've seen the previous projects, we've had attorneys and our butter and all that, so.
Can't win them all, I'm sorry.
Apparently they're friends now, so they all get along and everything like that. So, um, anyway, I think most of you know where this is located, obviously between Charles Bancroft Highway and the Merrimack. Um, this is the latest two thousand and four Google Earth. They've gone through now, so they've updated them. We were going off two thousand twenty-two and twenty-one a while ago, so this was the first one I'd seen, twenty-four. And we're here tonight for a slight amendment to the winter light show that we presented to everybody beforehand. Now, I see new faces on the board here, so maybe not everybody knows all what we went through for about a year and a half on, on that light show that was there. Um, but at the time, what we did is we called it a winter light show. These guys were looking at trying to utilize the property. As you know, this property sits vacant from about the Thanksgiving till about now, till season starts. Any business tries to recoup some of that money that they've lost during those months as best they can. They looked at this light show that we had seen ones up at Loudon, which was a drive-through one that we presented to you guys back in the day. These guys drove to some other ones throughout the country, came back to me with this great idea to do this drive-through. We worked and worked with this board on how was traffic going to get through it, how are people going to drive? How are the pedestrians going to walk through it? Because we had a lot of movements on the site based on that application there. Since that time, he's found that there's two local ones, one in Derry, Larrabee Light Show, and one in Milford, Mr. Willard's Holiday Trail, that it's actually more conducive to walk through these. It's more family-friendly, it's more inviting, uh, there's more opportunities for pictures in front of lights. Um, it really is going to play on their spooky world, where they have kind of things that people will go through and can see. People can walk through now. They can stop at something, take some pictures in front of it. Um, you'll see in my presentation, we've got areas for them to pick up a hot cocoa, an alcoholic beverage, we've talked to them, they're allowed to do that, uh, maybe some merchandise through the walking thing that's out there. Um, so I'm just going to walk through, again, it's pretty minor changes, but I'll try and fill in the people and, and answer questions as we go through here. Um, but basically, the first modification that we made is, uh, we had called this thing the winter light show. They now have named it. It's now the Holly Jolly Journey. And I want everybody to try and say that three times fast, because I cannot. Um, so that's the main change we put throughout the plan notes on there. Um, the second change is what I talked about is how the patrons will actually access the site. Um, we no longer want to drive through the site. Uh, you can see the, where we would be doing it. We'd be walking through this trail here. We'd come down to this point. We're still keeping the exact same trail that we did on the previous twenty twenty-two. Um, but we're not going to utilize in the area down here. Come back up and around. Come back up and around in here, and then we'll come back down through here, and come back around and come back out. Um, so, again, utilizing the site very similar to spooky world, where people now are just gonna come in and park and utilize the site throughout the site. Um, the next thing that we had changed is parking stuff. Um, we had had plans E one and E two, which would no longer be part of this set here, that were traffic circulation for those cars that were there. Those plans showed like getting rid of parking spaces here, not using any of the parking spaces here, basically closing them all off at that time to really make sure people were just functioning on driving through the site. That's now changed. This area here, we had three lanes for people to queue up in here. One lane would go through, and then they would all kinda go down. We don't need that queuing anymore there, so we've just left this as one row of parking along the grass in here. Uh, we would like to just utilize, obviously, this is not paved yet, right?
Not yet, it's under construction.
So this phase is under construction now, uh, my company's doing the inspections out there for these guys. Um, they hoped to get it done last year, it kinda fell into some things, it just didn't happen. But this year it started construction, so we'll have all these parking spaces paved and everything for the site as we kinda said back in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, we proved this. Um, so, everybody come in, utilize the site, basically as spooky world's using it now. The entrance to the walking area will be at this location here, again, very similar to where you get on for the hayrides. We would have a first kind of, uh, kiosk area, I would say, that we're proposing, I should have had these four highlighted as well. But we propose just basically ten by twenty kinda tents, um, that'll have facades on them and stuff like that. One, you could get a beverage at, one, you can get some merchandise at, one, you can get, uh, um, you know, food at and stuff like that. So, that would kinda be the first one as you come in, and then talking to the other people as people walk through here. Again, it's December, there'd be a second area here that if they wanted to get a hot chocolate, wanna do something like that, there'll also be porta-pots at these locations here, so we put those in at this location here, this location here, and that location there. And then they move on their way again, go through the barn that has some of their exhibits during spooky world, if you've taken that there. Make their way out through here, again, have a third spot. Um, what we tried to do is make sure that if anybody, young children, stuff like that, it got too much for them, that when they're at this point or that point, they'd be able to cut through and get themselves out. Um, so we tried to think of things like that as they were walking through the si- out, through the site. The fire pit that we talked about, well, this is where the location for the, the, um, the tickets are if you get into the site. Fire pit. We've got the two buildings that are out there now, that second one kind of is used a lot for the spooky world. I think you do games and stuff like that inside one of those. The fire pit will propose kinda just a place to hang out as they come back. Again, finding out, and again, these guys are just kinda getting in this, why we're modifying from last year, he didn't start it yet this year. Finding out, again, it's a more family-oriented event than coming with your car and just quickly driving through and driving out. So trying to do a couple things that kinda make sense to that, um, is what we laid this out. And then the other changes, again, we just changed it to the Holly Jolly Trail through the notes here. We did change the hour of the time of it. The previous note said the, um, first, was it the first Friday after Thanksgiving? Yes, first Friday after Thanksgiving, and then it was gonna end the first Friday after Christmas. Instead of, we just said January fifteenth, we just picked a date. Um, we thought that that was clean enough, instead of picking this after Friday and that and mixing things up. We just said January fifteenth would be the, kinda the end, that the light show would be added at.
And when would it start?
First Friday after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, okay.
I changed again, just some of the names in the overflow parking areas that we had here and here, um, just to kinda say that it could also be for the Holly Jolly type use that was out there as well, that they could park. We had talked about this, I'm sorry, we had talked about this the last time. These guys do a lot of corporate events as well, and we had parking in the grass between the two barns for corporate events. We also have another spot between the kiddie land and the other building that was used. So, again, utilizing the similar stuff that spooky world is utilizing, but keeping it on-site, um, for our use that was here. Drainage-wise, grading-wise, all that kinda stuff, we didn't change any of that stuff. This is all, again, like I said, an amendment, it's really no changing in how the facility is, is operating the, um, the Holly Jolly Journey.
Now, um, so usually, I know, I know for, um, the, um, spooky world and the haunted hayride, you use the, is it the cornfield in the back for parking? Are you gonna use that for this event?
We are not here for that. If in two or three years, this thing is successful as spooky world did, we may have to come back on that. Right now, with the numbers, we've got about three hundred and ninety-five.
So that's not gonna be used for parking then?
Right.
Okay.
We have three hundred and ninety-five spaces right now on-site. I'm sure the first year, I mean, I don't know how, these guys are pretty good at marketing, but we'll see that. But yes, we would have to come back to you if we're gonna use the fields and stuff like that for the spooky world.
I guess, um, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, but, um, do you know how many people you think are gonna be coming to this first, uh, time event?
We, we have just a very rough, a rough idea, and our, our, we're hopeful that we could get between fifteen and twenty thousand people in a given season. It's not as many people per night as spooky world, we're open thirty-six nights, and spooky world is, uh, uh, nearly twice that, you know? Um, so, it's much more spread out than spooky world. And, uh, n- uh, in addition to that, people just aren't here as long as spooky world as well, you know? It's, it's a shorter experience, when you go through, you get out, and you walk through, and you take your pictures. Spooky world's kind of a little bit of a long night, you know? So, um, we don't anticipate parking being an issue at all, because people will not be there as long. It is winter time, a little bit cold, people aren't gonna be out there too long.
That's kinda the big.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, the clientele, we think.
Yeah.
We think the clientele's gonna be a little different, we also recognize that we're in December now. December's been pretty decent lately, so, we'll see how it goes, but I mean, we could go back to snow in Thanksgiving again, so.
Yeah.
And that's why we feel like what we're bringing forward here, we're really trying to get this off the ground this year, um, and, and offer this as, as an event, so. I didn't wanna bring up a whole bunch of other stuff at this point, when it, it, it could get great and may not, you know, I mean, that's kinda the, we've got plenty of parking for what we need right now to get through this season, um, and if it's a great season, then maybe they'll come back next year.
And will you be doing like Christmas trees or things there?
We still kept all that on the plans, okay, that still was being proposed down in locations. But, that was all the issue that people were driving through, all the Christmas trees. Now, this'll just be down here like it's been for years, it'll be on its own down there, nobody's driving through it, no issues with putting the trees in the cars that we talked about, all that stuff that really was brought up because we had a lot of vehicles driving, I mean, fifteen thousand or twenty thousand cars driving through the site possibly.
And so, what is the parking that, so you're gonna use the corporate parking for, was that gonna be for corp- specifically for corporate events, or is it gonna be for everybody?
This is for corporate and for, um, overflow parking for the, the Holly Jolly Ride. Now, we'd like to add the Holly Jolly Journey to these two parking spaces that were just set up for corporate at the time.
Okay. And the parking that's in the front of the buildings and all that stuff with the golf courts? All that's gonna be utilized?
Yes, if need be, yeah.
Okay. Um, any other places for parking, or is that it, pretty much?
That is it.
Yeah, that's it.
About it, okay.
That is it. You'll see we have the new parking, uh, you, if you see in the plan, it's not there yet, it's hard to envision, but we have, you know, we have the new parking in the back, which is gonna be like extensively increase in our parking capacity.
Okay. Um, before I go any further, I guess we need to, um, this is a site plan amendment. Um, we're gonna have to do an application for completeness, like we just did in the other one. Um, so I'm just gonna ask Joan, have all of butters been notified of this, um, site plan amendment and all, any fees paid?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And, um, assuming there was no regional impact, um. Jay, have you had an opportunity to take a look at the plans, have an opportunity to review everything? Does everything look good to you in terms of completeness, in terms of the application?
Yes.
Uh, you have, this i- is a minor site plan amendment?
Yeah.
Given the scale of the project, so yes.
All right, so with that, um, I'll entertain a motion for an application for completeness for, um, Mel's Funway Park LLC, four, four, three, and four, five, four, Route 3A, Tax Map twenty, lots fourteen and seventeen.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second?
Second, uh, any further discussion? And this is on the application for completeness, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes, um, oh, yes, uh, four, zero, zero, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so, um, we've, we've accepted the application for completeness. Um, any questions from the board, and, um, any other questions you have for the applicant this evening? Jay, do you have anything you'd like to add, any comments that you have, so?
I, I think, um, overall, um, you know, this is really actually a, a less intensive use of the site than what was proposed previously. I, I don't, i- it's, obviously, it's hard to gauge how many people are gonna be coming to this event, but I, I don't see a significant impact or change to traffic. If anything, it's probably less, uh, than, than what we saw before. I think as noted, some of the concerns that we had about site circulation with the vehicles moving through the site would be alleviated with this proposal. Hard to tell if the parking is gonna be sufficient, but I think to the point, uh, if it isn't, at some point, they would have to come back before the board, there's other opportunities, uh, to park. I did have some questions on what exactly the vendor kiosks were, so I, I, I think you've answered that, they'll be temporary tents. Um, doesn't say so on the plan, but I, at least that I found, but I assume that these will be taken down after the event.
They will be, yes, positively.
So we said approximately ten by twenty, um, and it would be like, um, when you go to football games and that, kinda the tents, but they actually have, I saw the Christmas ones, you showed me, but they kinda put facades on them that'll make it look like you're walking in an igloo or, you know, or something like that.
So presumably, it might be helpful to just have a note on the plan indicating?
Yep.
Okay.
That, and, um, then, my only other question really was just kind of back to anticipating how many people are coming. How are you gonna be managing ticketing, is this gonna be purch- purchased online in advance?
We do primarily, uh, time ticketing, that's the way we do spooky world now, and we tend to do the same for Christmas. Sometimes people do show up, and, you know, we don't kick them out at the family event, but that's how we, w- we do ticketing now. Pretty much everybody across the country has moved to time ticketing. It really helps, because you can kinda see like ahead of time if it's gonna be a busy night, helps you with staffing. You know what I mean, like, you know, how busy is the night gonna be? So it really does help in other ways, other than just selling tickets, it helps you like kinda know how many people you would need, you know?
That's where I was going, because that, not exactly knowing what you're gonna attract if you're doing time ticketing and you
Yeah.
have a capacity limit.
Right.
That helps control that.
On a slow night, we're not saying everything, every single kiosk will be open in every single area to get a hot cocoa, there might just be like one on a slow night, you know, like, and then on the busy nights, we'll have our three areas of, that you can get a hot cocoa, you know?
But beyond that, uh, th- those are really my questions, and, you know, I think this'll actually be a nicer experience than the drive.
And, um, when you enter, um, at the end, where you go in for the walking, um, I know with the spooky world, you have, inside you have, um, those, um, what is it, um, places where people can get?
The haunts.
The haunts?
Yes.
I guess you call them the haunts, but they're, they're, the structures that are in there.
Yes.
Um, are you gonna be usalite is, utilizing those for anything? Or is it, are you gonna have like a beer garden there, or you're gonna do something like that, is that?
Yeah, what it is, is that first area that you see come in, that main area, will be like the main focal point, where all the kiosks are. That's gonna be the first focal point, when, when you come in, you know, and then hopefully, people can buy whatever, or maybe a little, you know, maybe they can buy a little tchotchke or something, you know, or, or, or maybe an ornament, something like that. And then, and what will happen is you'll walk around, and the only things we're really using relative to Halloween primarily are the barns, but those are obviously gonna be transformed into like, like a little, uh, you, you know, one of them is gonna be like a, uh, Santa's toy shop, giving it away, I'm in trouble now, giving it away. One of them's gonna be Tan- Santa's toy.
I'm just glad you're receiving this from Halloween.
Yeah. Giving it away. But yeah, one of them is gonna be Santa's toy shop, and the other one, um, you know, uh, the other one is actually gonna be a winter polar cave, so I'll give you those two, but that's just, those are, those are the only real physical things.
Similar to what they do for spooky world.
Other things will be blocking off, like, for instance, you know, we have some cars that, you know, try and scare you when you walk by, some trucks and stuff.
No one watches.
Uh, it's, uh, so yes.
And when you go in to, um, the trail there that goes to the haunted hayride that goes around?
Yes.
Um, are you gonna have like, stuff in there, you know, I don't know if they're lights or?
Well, there'll be lights for the whole, this whole thing, you'll be walking through, lights will be all over, yeah, that's the whole idea, you'll be.
Primarily a light show, like, that's fine, you'll have something, yeah, you'll go and they'll, you'll come to like, each section is themed, you know what I mean? So you go and, what, what?
I'm gonna give the whole show away.
No, you don't have to, you're good.
Sorry.
I'll tell you another section that we're working on.
Did you ever think of a sleigh ride? You have a hayride, I didn't know, I, I was thinking of that today, I was like.
But, uh, yeah, it's different, things are themed, so, you know, you, you go through, and you see like this kinda lights are themed for this, and this is themed for that, so.
Very good. Um, Lou, I know you, did you, uh, no, you didn't.
Yeah, I sent a letter in.
Did you send a letter for this one?
Yeah, basically, I said there are no engineering and drainage issues associated with the site plan, so I have no comments on that. But in looking at the original approval, it's showing, um, portolex, approximate porta-potties?
Yeah.
For spooky world.
Yes.
They, they come out after spooky world?
Is what, the porta- no, we have porta-potties on the sign here.
Yeah, we showed them here, so spooky world's kinda, these are the ones that stayed over from spooky world.
Yep.
We added one here for the light show, another one here for the light show, another one here, and actually, I'm sorry, one down here on the corner.
Yeah, I'm just looking where you had, showed it on the plan is where your, the old plan.
Yep.
Is where the new parking's going in.
Yep.
Right in here.
Um, I actually left it in up there, so it's right there, and I just put the park in just to the, I, I used the same lane that was already there, I didn't move anything.
Okay.
So that, those can still stay there, and actually, they would stay there.
I think they're gonna have a big grinch at the driveway if you need to pay your ticket and a tent.
Well, I have a feeling Santa Claus is gonna be there too, but. Suspect there'll be so, a lot of interesting things there. All right, um, anybody have anything else on the board? All right, at this time, I'll open it up to public comment, is there any members of the public that wish to comment on this site application amendment? All right, uh, hearing none, I will close public comment. Um, you guys, what do we wanna do? I mean, I think it's a pretty minor site change, I mean, this was gonna be a driving event, now it's being a walking event. Um, and I, you know, certainly, I think it's, I think it's gonna be great, and it's a town thing. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve or conditionally approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this site amendment for Mel's Funway Park.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do, uh, okay, so I have a motion and a second, um, so Jeremy, wait, the motion, um, any further discussion? And I think what I would probably add is, um, probably if we're gonna do a condition of approval regarding the tents or the takedown of the tents, is that on the plan or no?
The takedown of them?
Of the tents, of the tents?
The, the vendors, the vendor tents.
Oh, yeah, those will be taken down, o- off the.
Is there a specific timeframe that those are gonna be taken down?
We said January fifteenth, the light show be done, so they'll be taken down.
So, it, but is that reflected on the?
I did not say that the tents would be taken down, I can modify a note.
All right, so I guess that's gonna be my condition of approval.
Okay.
Um, that, that, January fifteenth, the tents be, come down?
Okay.
Um, for the, um, for the event.
And most likely, the show's gonna end around the second or third of January, and by the fifteenth, gives us time to take it down for it, so that's perfect for us.
That's fine, as long as it's reflected on the plan. And, um, obviously, you've already put the new hours of operation, you've done all that, you've added, um, you know, what it is. Um, anything else, Jay, is, or I think, I think that's pretty much it, okay? All right, so with those amendments, uh, I'm sorry, not those amendments, but those conditions of approval, um, we have a motion and we have a second, um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes four, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen.
Everybody, thank you.
Missed luck. Go Celtics.
Yes. Okay, okay. Take care. Okay. So we took care of number four, uh, earlier, so we don't have to do that this evening, we continued that matter. Um, well, I only have part of the applicant, so I guess it's, um, I think at this time, it's, um, what is it, comments, um, what do we do next?
End this.
Oh, did I give you the second page?
Committee report.
Committee reports, thank you, that's what I, I was, I knew it was something with a C. Um, committee reports, uh, so reports from committee, so I guess I'll start with you, Jeremy, since you are
Yes, sure.
on the economic development, is there anything going on with that, or what's going?
Um, so, yeah, we're still doing our jo- assigned job here, we not need. Um, so, yeah, we're still doing our jo- assigned job here, we not meet two weeks ago because of school holiday vacation, we're actually here tomorrow night, right here on this awesome location at six thirty. Uh, so come down and see us in, uh, China if you'd like. That's it for economic development.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, um, attended, and also Jay, last night, attended the, um, capital improvement plan meeting, the first meeting of two thousand twenty-four. Um, we did, um, the, um, election of officers, we looked at the schedule, um, for two thousand twenty-four, a lot of preliminary stuff, reviewed the bylaws, um, um, so it went well, we had, um, information from the town. Uh, Administrator Kleiner was here, and we had Peter Plansky from the school board, who, uh, represented the school, uh, talked a little bit about that, and, um, so our next meeting is gonna be the seventeenth of June, and, uh, maybe at the fire station, I, I'm not sure yet, but to be determined, but the CIP has already, is underway, so. We're, we've gotten started on that. Um, the conservation commission met last week, I did go to the meeting, um, that was here in Town Hall. Uh, they talked about the kids fishing derby, that's actually coming up May eighteenth, that'll be at, uh, Ness and Keg Brook in Parker Park. Um, and I know they're working on that. Um, not much else to report, there were things dealing with the budget, um, and, um, cleanups and so forth, and, uh, checks on properties and stuff like that, so. Um, a lot of stuff going on with conservation as usual. Um, and I believe, what's, who am I missing? Laurel Marmack Local River Advisory Committee, I have not heard anything from them, so, we have not had a meeting on that. And I, that's all I have, and I, Jay, obviously, tomorrow is the event at the La Bella Winery for N R P C, your annual forum.
Yes. Focusing on water quality and supply.
And supply, and I, you know, we'll have the, was it the Commissioner of D E S and?
Yes, Sam, the CEO from Penachak.
CEO of Penachak will be there.
And then we've got a guy from, uh, U N H Stormwater Center to talk about that.
And that's at five, I believe, five to?
Five thirty.
Five thirty starts?
Dinner starts at six thirty.
To eight thirty, okay, very nice.
Have fun at that.
Yes?
Sure. Have fun at that.
I will. It'll be interesting.
And, um, I think we talked about this last time, the, um, I think the, uh, there is a, um, online, um, planning, um, webinar, or from the, uh, New Hampshire Office of Planning, and Energy and Planning, um, is put together for spring. So, it's all about planning boards and, uh, zoning, and, um, if you haven't had an opportunity to do it, it's, it's a great opportunity to just learn about the process and planning and zoning and, um, so I recommend, you know, look, taking a look at that, and probably do that at your leisure, so. It is free, I believe, I don't think, I don't think there's a fee for that.
It's free, yeah.
Yeah, it's free, so. Um, so that's all I have for committee reports. Um, the next thing I believe is the approval of the minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Did anybody have an opportunity to take a look at those, have any questions? Concerns, any amendments that you would like to make? If not, if we can enter, if someone can enter a motion to approve them, if they want?
I'll make a motion to approve the April sixteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Jared, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rose, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five, zero, zero, thank you. Good job. Okay. Um, any other business this evening, so, um, yes, there is something under any other business, it's that wonderful topic called M S four, and it's stormwater. Um, you should have received, I believe, from, um, was it Kim Kleiner, I think, sent it out, the red line version of the, uh, stormwater regulations. Um, as you know, we are actually on a very tight deadline, um, to be in compliance with the EPA, uh, come June. Um, and so, with that in mind, what, I had talked to Administrator Kleiner, uh, the other day, and I, we agreed that perhaps it might be prudent to do a special meeting or a special workshop. So, that is going to happen on May sixteenth, um, and, um, at seven o'clock here, I believe in Town Hall.
Yeah, the fire station.
Oh, at the fire station, at seven, at the fire station. Um, and I think this will give an opportunity to review, um, and if anybody has any questions, we can, we can do a workshop on it, and we will have the, um, uh, the person that reviewed it, um, that Ms. Kleiner had here the other night. Um, and, uh, they will be at the meeting, um, to provide any input. Um, the consultant, that's what I wanted to say, the consultant.
That's a Thursday.
What time you say that?
May sixteen?
Seven.
Seven.
Yes, May sixteen.
Sixteenth at, uh, the fire station, uh, community room. So, we'll have the consultant here, and, um, we, and obviously Lou Karen is gonna be here. I know Jay said he can't make that meeting, but maybe what, um, you know, I could ask Jay, um, maybe if you have anything beforehand, if you wanna, maybe, you know, if you wanna write something up, or if you wanna take a look at them and, you know, provide your comments before the sixteenth meeting, then we can review them at the meeting, even though you won't be here, uh, in person, so. And then, of course, um, are we still gonna have our public hearing on the twenty-first, or are we doing that, or, cause?
We won't have, we won't, we were gonna, originally, we were gonna have the workshop on the twenty-first, and then, um.
So, are we?
Hearing in June.
Okay, so the public hearing is still on for June?
So, yes, and we would need, the twenty-first would be too soon anyway, 'cause we're gonna need ten days.
Okay.
So.
Got it.
If you feel comfortable after the workshop, then you could vote to put it to public hearing.
Okay.
On what is that, di-?
June fourth.
June fourth.
June fourth, okay.
If you didn't, we still have the eighteenth.
Okay. Alright, so at least, I mean, the work, the, the, the purpose of the special meeting is to really get, to try to wrap things up here and, um, try to address so, all of, most of the questions that were raised at the last meeting, and hopefully get us in under the radar, um, for compliance.
If the public are, um, welcome to that meeting?
Yeah.
On the sixteenth, yes.
Yeah.
It's a public meeting, yeah.
Public meeting, your public is welcome to come in and?
I, I'd just add, if, um, at the meeting on the sixteenth, you, you don't feel, you have resolution, you could, we could still schedule a workshop or continue the workshop to the twenty-first, so.
It's gonna end up getting scheduled.
If you can't get through it that night, you still have that opportunity on the twenty-first, we can put up a placeholder on the agenda.
Right, just hope that they, we will.
Yeah, and you'll still have time from the twenty-first to vote to send it to.
What's the deadline?
Twenty-fourth.
I think it was the nineteenth?
Of June?
June nineteenth?
It was in June, it was, I know it was after our planning board meeting.
Yeah.
The eighteenth, I know it was after that.
I know it. Yes, hold on, I think I.
It was the end of June.
So, you keep the hard stop, uh, I never approve by that.
Yeah, so, so it's good to have some dates still to work with.
Right.
Yeah, June nineteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
So, we, time is of the essence.
So, yeah, yeah.
I was watching the forest selectmen meeting, and they were a little concerned about how close we're, this is coming.
Well, yeah, it is, um, unfortunately, and, um, but my hope and my goal is that we can get a lot.
You better have a lot of hope.
Addressed, I, I do, I guess I have to have a lot of hope, you're right.
You have the hope.
I got the hope, so. And what everybody else has is, that's fair game, but, um, my hope is that we will try to address as much as we can.
Lou had some comments and concerns, so hopefully.
And they were mostly true, so.
Hopefully, they have been addressed by now.
And I know Lou has been working with the consultant, so.
Oh, so he has, okay.
Is Lou gonna try to come on the sixteenth, or?
Yes, he is.
He's gonna be there.
So, I think if, in the draft that you've got, yeah, so it just won't be the, what you saw in yellow highlight, I, as I understood, it came from the consultant, and what's in red came from the.
Oh, you're getting up, getting there?
So, he had a lot of, he had a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. And with that, that's all I have for any other business, um, Joan, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Uh, Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
I have nothing.
Of course.
Uh, I don't know if you know, but we had that right to know seminar up in Concord, and I did attend that in person, it was nice, we had a group of folks together, it was fantastic. It was very informative, um, I learned some things that I didn't realize, and the right to know cannot supersede freedom of speech in any way, so, um, there are things that can be done to get around things, but it was a great center to go to, so how do I find anyone that teaches me differently, so.
Good.
Is that Steve Buckley, David?
Hmm, God, it's huge, uh, I think it was, I think Steve, Steve was the older guy that was doing it, I think, um.
Yeah, our attorney.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's a good guy, uh, him and the young, young guy too, they were both very informative, uh, very, threw lots of questions out of the audience, pretty good, pretty good turnout, it was actually, pretty good sellout, so it was nice.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. So, our next, uh, meeting, well, obviously, is gonna be our, um, May, what?
Well, next week and then the twenty-first.
Oh, the sixteenth, well, right, so the special meeting, uh, the special meeting for, um, May sixteenth will be the next meeting. Um, and then, of course, we have our regular meeting on the twenty-first, so that will be our official next meeting. Um, and that's, that's all I have. So, at this time, um, if there's nothing else this evening, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Alright, there you go. Um, I have a motion, second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five, zero, zero.